Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Seating in the council chambers remains limited to allow for social distancing, and there are still many residents in our high-risk population. For those reasons, we will also continue allowing citizens' participation through video conference. To learn about all the ways you can watch the meeting and to participate remotely, we encourage you to visit www.victoria tx.gov/talktocouncil. There are many options for how you can participate in our meeting tonight, ranging from watching on TV or speaking in citizens' comments through Zoom. I want to ask our city secretary to call the role to establish a quorum.
Councilman Delagarza?
I am on Zoom.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Solis?
Here.
Councilman Bocknight?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Young?
Councilman Young notified me that he will be late. He said, patience.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
And Mayor McCoy?
Here. With that, I will begin the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, I would like to welcome citizens who've chosen to be here tonight, as well as those who are tuned in on TV and other means of joining our meeting. We're going to go into public and employee recognitions. There are some proclamations on tonight that we're awaiting the arrival of one of the recipients. So when she arrives, we will go into that. So I would open it to you, Mr. Garza, for any employee recognitions.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do not have any employee recognitions for tonight.
Okay, then we'll go on and to our.
Mister, Mister Mayor, could we, could we recognize all of our employees that did a phenomenal job last week?
Oh, absolutely. That was part of my presentation.
That's part of his presentation, Kevin. And, and I echo those sentiments because we owe them a debt of gratitude. So we'll go into now an update on the water situation from City Manager Garza.
Sorry to, sorry to steal your thunder.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm sure employees do not mind where the thunder comes from. Again, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to just provide a brief synopsis of what has transpired literally over the last week. When we posted this agenda item, it was unclear at the time what the status of our situation would be today. So I wanted to make sure that we had an update, just in case we were still in the thick of things. But in any case, I want to start off by conveying that as City Manager, as a resident of Victoria, I have high expectations of the city, high expectations of myself. I have the same sentiments that many of you have, that, you know, this should not have had happened, that, you know, we need to figure out what's going on. I agree with all of that. As much as we learned from Harvey and really built a system that was much stronger, of course, we can never account for, for anything. And so one of the things that I'm certainly most proud of the last week is just the response of the employees and how quickly they mobilized to address the situation. But moreover, how quickly they mobilized to help each other out and, and members of our community. And so there'll be a couple of pictures throughout the presentation, but really it was a, a team effort. And, and as City Manager and really as a resident as well, I couldn't be prouder than, than what I feel right now, to be quite honest with you. But in any case, going into it, I think it's important to note, too, that one of the things that I, that I appreciate and that I look for in situations like these is how people react. And so I assure you that you have a resilient bunch, and hopefully that showed and continues to show. So really quickly, this winter storm has a name now, and so Winter Storm Yuri arrived on Sunday, February fourteenth. Many individuals know that power outages began on Monday, February fifteenth. Of course, the power outages have nothing to do with us, but they certainly attributed to the week-long events in terms of individuals' experiences throughout the week. For us, it really began on Tuesday, February sixteenth, when our water system experienced a pretty significant depletion of, of our water supply, which caused the water pressure to decrease significantly. And as many of you know, that triggers a water boil notice. One of the things that I want to point out and reiterate, which we've attempted to do over the last week, is that this had nothing to do with loss of power at our surface water treatment plant. It has a generator. It never, thankfully, it never got to the point of needing the generator at that plant. But I think it's important to note that the plant never lost power. Really quickly, I want to mention who was impacted. By now, I think many are aware that our north, that our city is divided into two pressure planes, the north and the south. The north makes up about a third of our residents, the south, the remaining two-thirds. The north continued to have normal to reduced water pressure, while the south had little to no water pressure. And so unlike Harvey, which I know a lot of you and a lot of members of the public compared these situations, this was not a complete loss of water supply through the whole system. The water plant never lost power. It never shut down. There just simply was not enough water running through the system to make it all the way around. It was caused for a number of reasons. We're still looking into some of these, but without a doubt, the winter storm had an impact on some of the gauges. That's an investigation that's still ongoing. I saw some data today that suggests that, at least from a monitoring standpoint, it did definitely appear to deplete rapidly. But obviously, from a physics standpoint, that's probably unlikely. And so clearly, there was some issues with the gauges potentially being frozen and, and just some issues there that we'll continue to investigate. But then also just water line breaks throughout the system, both in public infrastructure and in private. I actually have some maps that I'll share with you, so you could see the locations, which very clearly show that the majority of them are in the south pressure plane, which is obviously consistent with what our residents experience. And one thing that I'm certainly extremely proud of is that the system was restored, at least from our standpoint, within seventy-two hours of the event occurring. This is just a graphic that we kept showing this week, showing our different steps of our strategy, which of course was to refill the water storage capacity and try and get a handle on some of these breaks and leaks. That's a process that started immediately that same afternoon and evening on Tuesday, and it ran its course all the way until Thursday nighttime. We made the decision to begin releasing water Friday morning, as opposed to the middle of the night, because obviously it's important to try and identify the leaks and breaks that might be remaining in the system. And then on Saturday, we were able to begin the process to come out of the water boil notice. And as many of you know, we came off of that Sunday evening. So really quickly, we received nearly eight hundred requests for water shut-offs. That's a significant number. In a normal week, the utility department receives about fifteen. And this number does not account for any of the ones that private residents might have been able to shut off on their own. Many of us are familiar with, you know, where, you know, water meter shut-off is, but not everybody is. Not everybody has a water meter shut-off that is easy to utilize. A lot of our older parts of town that have old infrastructure, back then, they just did not come with those easy meter-water shut-offs that, that now are very common. On the public side, we've identified, or identified five breaks, sixteen leaks. The most significant was a twelve-inch water main break. All of the breaks are under control. Most of the leaks are under control. Some leaks still linger very small, but that's just due to just the process. Ken was actually telling me that we got a little bit in trouble with, with the one-call system because in order to fix these, you need to call for locates and things of that sort. And so when we were in emergency status, they were, they were telling us that other communities were in more emergency status than us. And so they adjusted. And so we're getting to those small leaks slowly but surely. Whoops, went too fast. This is a map of the north pressure plane to give you a sense of the meter cutoffs that are on the north pressure plane. You'll notice a consistency on Navarro. One of the executive decisions that was made and supported by the mayor in the heat of the moment was for us to not go through the normal process as it relates to shutting off meters. The normal process would necessitate notice to the property owner. But obviously, in the heat of the moment, there was just not enough time. And our priority was to get the system under control. And so staff would go around. They started shutting off large, you know, irrigation systems. They started, if they saw a leak somewhere, they would shut it off. We felt that it was important in that, in that emergency state to just do what we needed to do in order to get the system under control. But this is the north pressure plane. This is the south pressure plane. And so you can see that from a residence standpoint, those requests are significantly higher in the south pressure plane compared to the north. So I'll show those two again. And again, this doesn't account for the ones that residents would have shut off themselves. Can you pull up the PDF? We also have a map that it's easier to see on PDF of the city infrastructure-related ones, which also show that the majority of them are in the south pressure plane. And so you, this is just a visual representation of that. Again, this data simply backs up why the south pressure plane was the, the plane that saw the greatest impact as it relates to water pressure. Thank you. Oops. This is a happy clicker. One of the other items that, that came up throughout the week, of course, was the concern about fire protection. One of the differences between this situation and Hurricane Harvey was that, again, the surface water treatment plant never lost power, and so it was always producing water, which facilitated these tankers going back and forth between the plant to refill. But there was still a strategic effort to place tanker apparatuses around the city. Shout out of gratitude to Victoria County Fire Department because two of theirs, which is that middle picture, were two out of the three were, belonged to the county. And so they were gracious enough to work with our fire department to place those inside city limits in case there was a situation. Thankfully, there was not. There was a fire that, in a small apartment complex, or not small apartment complex, in a unit, in an apartment complex, that came Sunday night after we had restored, not Saturday, Saturday night, I believe, that had come after we had restored water. But there was, there were no issues there. The fire department also was instrumental in working closely with the hospitals and some dialysis clinics to provide water to them. Quail Creek Utility District was also instrumental in helping with this effort. And so shout out to them and, and appreciation to them as well. Our communication strategy, just briefly, some, some, some stats. Really, Ashley, kudos to her and her team. They worked a lot throughout the week to really try and get information out. We know that that first day on Tuesday was somewhat of a cluster, but quite frankly, it was for all of us. You know, many of us were also dealing with loss of power at home, loss of water, et cetera, et cetera. And so really, it was a situation that staff, that, at least from a communication standpoint, we implemented as soon as we could. That same Tuesday evening, there was press release that was issued. And then beginning on Wednesday, we started doing multiple press releases throughout the day. We created a dedicated webpage for information. We started doing virtual press briefings that were on Facebook, but also broadcast on KVU, VTV fifteen, which was actually the first time outside of a council meeting that there was something broadcast live on VTV fifteen. Normally, this council chamber has the technology to do that, and we had never done it outside of the council chambers. And so that was a process that they were able to figure out on the fly to get that live on VTV fifteen. And so kudos to them for figuring that out. We established an official hotline, which a lot of executives were involved with that. Cheryl was involved with some of the organization behind it. We really had a lot of folks step up for that official hotline, which received over twenty-five-hundred calls. As you can see on the bottom right, in terms of some of the Facebook views, that very first briefing that we did on Wednesday, over twenty-six thousand views on Facebook. And you can tell when the water came back. We restored water on the morning of February nineteenth. And so by the time we did the press briefing that afternoon, you could see the major drop-off in viewership. But that's a good thing, obviously. Just really quickly, on the potable water side of things, everybody's familiar by now that the, the water boil issues ran all across the state, over fourteen million Texans affected. As of today, the tally was approaching two thousand water supply companies underwater boils at one point or another. There's about thirteen hundred still active and about five hundred that are now not in a water boil, including us. And so we were within that first twenty percent of entities to come out of a water boil. And so I also think that that's something to, to be proud of as well. As it relates to bottled water, unlike a hurricane or another localized event with this impacting the entire state, the traditional mechanisms to acquire, acquire water from the state or from other, or from HEB, you know, from whomever would normally send, you know, water, it just wasn't the same. You know, there was ice all over the highways. It was just not the same. And so we had a team of executives that took it upon themselves to start calling everybody, asking if they had availability of water. We normally are dependent on donations or normally dependent on some type of shipment from the state or from FEMA, but we literally just started buying water. We started buying water from whoever had it and from whoever was willing to sell. And we started distributing those cases of water, city personnel, that is, started distributing those to the hospitals, to nonprofits. It was not enough water to do a mass distribution. The last thing we wanted to do was have limited supply and just create more chaos because of the turnout that would have, would have showed up for a mass distribution event. So we did the best we could in getting the water out to our partners. And so here's just a quick list of those. Through that procurement effort, we were able to distribute close to sixteen hundred cases of water. And these are just a couple of pictures of Parks employees. Again, this, these were efforts straight up from city employees that stepped up to, to figure it out when nobody else was sending us water. It wasn't until Sunday that we received water, but by that point, our system had already been restored. And so that demand would not have had been as great as it were, as it would have been earlier that week. We did receive sixteen pallets of bottled water through, from, from FEMA. They arrived Sunday morning, and by Sunday evening, they were out. We sent the majority of them to the food bank. And then that evening, they were distributed amongst some multifamily complexes that we heard still did not have running water because of their own plumbing issues on their side of the meter, as well as some issues at some housing authority properties. This was an extremely quick mobilized effort. I mean, literally, we finished our briefing on Sunday, call it five o'clock, and through communicating with chiefs and staff, by six o'clock, there was people at the Parks warehouse loading water from the police department, from fire department, and we were going around distributing those, those cases of water. So these are just a couple of, of pictures. By the way, I don't have a lot of pictures of Public Works employees out on the field fixing leaks because apparently, taking pictures is not something that either A, was a priority or B, something anybody thought of doing. I wish I had a bunch of pictures of, you know, just guys out on the street, or women, out on the street, just looking for all of these leaks and just addressing everything. But I guess in a way, everybody was very just focused on the mission. But in any case, some of the resources that are available, there's still some potable water availability at the food bank and the long-term recovery group as it relates to bottled, bottled water. The long-term recovery group actually received some more pallets of bottled water this morning. And so some of our partner agencies are in communication with them about that. Of course, there's the COAD, which also has resources. Jenna West over at OEM spearheaded the effort of, of creating this centralized site for resources, Crossroads Cares three-six-one dot com as another way to try and get as many, as much information out there as possible related to resources. Rick McBrayer would be here, but they're out dealing with a situation currently. But he asked me to go through this slide with you, simply to remind the public that because we were declared disaster, that individuals needing assistance are able to apply for FEMA individual disaster assistance. And this is just some information on where the, where people might be able to go or who to call or what number to call, I should say, for those that are interested in, in more information related to that program. Oops. In terms of our, for the resources that we're already figuring out to provide, excuse me, tonight, there's an item on the agenda for approval of the waiver of permit repair fees for a month. This is consistent with what, what the city did after Harvey. We also had made a decision early in the process to not charge for turning off water meters. But we're going to continue that also in terms of turning them back on. And so we're, we'll run that through close to the end of March. One of the things that our utility billing department did after Harvey as well, because of just issues caused with meter reading and just other elements, was just work with our customers. And so that's what we plan to do. And so for those customers that maybe experienced a leak or a break and thus a high flow of water through their system caused by this winter storm, we invite them to call the utility billing office and arrange for an adjustment, which would simply take the last two months and average that out for their billing cycle, for their billing cycle applicable to, to this storm event. And we'll be putting out a press release on that.
I also had a call today because of, you know, the office had been closed last week, and my bill was due. I called them and they said that there was no, the fees were waived, in other words, so you can pay your bill and still not.
Correct. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we, we are waiving those, some of those late payment fees because of being shut down last week. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
What's next for us? For us, it's just continuing to be involved with some of the recovery efforts. Obviously, that's not something that we mainly spearhead, but we do want to be involved with that. We obviously are beginning formal review of events and procedures to identify areas of opportunity. The city did a tremendous job in, in having a more resilient system as it relates to power after Harvey. But as I mentioned earlier, power was not the issue in this particular instance. And so we'll be looking at what areas, what additional areas we can invest in to have a more resilient system. One of the things that has somewhat gotten lost in all of this, too, is just the impact to our own facilities because we did have some, some water leaks, breaks, et cetera, at our own facilities. And so we're finalizing what that might look like. And so I envision providing an update on that aspect of, of these, these next steps next week. And then with the same authorization that the president gave in terms of FEMA disaster assistance, that means that we can also potentially seek reimbursement through the public assistance program. And so that is something that we will continue to assess as we try and get a handle on our expenditures and make a determination on whether it's a worthwhile effort to go down that path or not. But anyway, but that's what's next steps for us, and that's really all I got for tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, from my perspective, I'm going to echo what Ms. Scott said earlier. There's not enough thanks to each of our employees throughout, and I mean from top to bottom. The response was immediate in working with our city manager, literally on a daily basis since this began. I mean, the responsiveness to ideas and the taking of action, appropriate action, was unparalleled. And so my hat's off to everybody because I understand in your organization, you had people from wearing different hats that were stepping up and.
Oh, absolutely.
Taking care of logistics.
Library Director Dana was distributing water and running all over the place. Yeah.
The, 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 the actual resiliency of the organization is quite impressive. Everybody steps up. When there's a job to be done, they figure it out. And, you know, I hesitate to, to point out people by name, but, you know, Chief, I mean, you're, you're an incredible person with logistics. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. And response with our medical community on that water situation was just absolutely incredible. And, and I know you had a lot of help and other. was just absolutely incredible. And I know you had a lot of help and others, I mean, I could name every single one of our city employees. And the one important thing, and I think you mentioned it in one of our press briefings, by and large, everybody showed up for work, you know? And you've got to understand that these folks were having the same issues at home with their families, with lack of power and lack of water that we all were dealing with and that we got all the calls from our other citizens about. But they showed up and they did their job and they did it admirably. And so I can't express any more thanks. It was just an incredible effort. And I might add that we, from our conversations, and I'm sure council will agree as well, we're going to apply that same effort into analyzing what happened and doing it very much in depth and together. And we will identify what needs to be fixed, and then we'll figure out as council how we can possibly fund the necessary improvements that need to be made to help mitigate this from ever happening again. So kudos to you, Mr. Gardner.
I want to add also, I mean, our community was fabulous. They were frustrated. They wanted to know what was going on. It didn't even matter what we told them. They just wanted to know something. But they were great with it. And I noticed one of the days of the press release, there were some negative comments coming. And the city put out a comment that said, hey, this is for answering questions and for constructive information. If you've got a problem, please call the hotline. And the negative comments stopped. And so I was really impressed with the reaction of our community. They reached out to, I'm sure they reached out to all of you, too, and we gave them the information we could. You were great at giving us information to give to them, not to downplay the amazing role that our employees played. But the community really stepped up also.
All right. Well, I'd like to end, if you don't mind, joining me in a round of applause for all the city employees that really helped out throughout the last week. Thank you.
I will ask one question. Has Ms. Wilkinson arrived yet? Okay. Well, we'll just move on until she arrives and take that in due time. We now are to items from council. Are there any items from council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens' communication. As a reminder, citizens' communication may be done either in person or through video conference. We would encourage anyone who has had any recent exposure to COVID-19 or those who might be at high risk in our high-risk population group to make use of the video conference again. Those instructions are again available at www.victoria.gov/talktocouncil. Comments will be limited to five minutes in duration and will be received by audio only. There will not be an opportunity to provide any presentation or visual materials, either in person or via teleconference. Please remember to silence any cell phones, televisions, or other background noise so that we may clearly hear your comments. It is generally the practice of city council not to respond to comments made during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. I didn't receive any comment cards, but I would ask anybody in the audience, any citizen that wants to speak on any matter to step forward now. Seeing none, I'll ask Mr. Food, has anybody online, have anyone online raised their hand to speak? So seeing none there, I will move on to items with public hearings. Ms. Hillbridge?
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget to provide funding for the emergency management services regarding COVID-19 response in the amount of $69,000.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Real quick, Stafford questioned amendment, amended the general fund balance, I mean, a budget for an amount of $69,000, of which, as you're aware now, we're going to help the county of Victoria to split the costs for a vaccine distribution software program. Our cost is about $49,000. And the remaining balance of $20,000 is to be used for future COVID-19 expenditures that might pop up in the process of the COVID vaccine processes. With that said, staff, we'll be submitting a reimbursement with FEMA to cover 100% of all these expenses. So even though I'm doing a budget amendment, just be transparent, just try to get the expenses out there. I plan to recover 100% of these expenses through the FEMA, which is currently still open on the COVID-19. We haven't used. Recently, the past few weeks, FEMA has notified us that there will be 100% reimbursement on the COVID-19. So if we don't get it there, as you well know, Congress is coming up with a new COVID-19 distribution. More money, more money. So we should be covered for right now. I'll address any questions you might have. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Raina? Hearing none, I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to step forward and speak to this matter, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add one comment before you call the question, I just want to make sure the public is aware that this ordinance is being read on an emergency basis. There will not be a second and third reading of this ordinance, and it will require an affirmative vote of five members.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. So I close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Go move.
Second.
The motion is second on item C1. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. I assume we have the necessary five votes. Thank you. Move into the next item, please.
Item C2 is an ordinance reviewing and renewing Chapter 15 of the Victoria City Code as pertains to the city's juvenile curfew.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Chief.
It's good to see you guys today, especially after that last week. Very tough week for everybody. Thanks for all your support. I'm asking today that we take a look at renewing a long-existing ordinance that is a valuable tool for us to minimize juvenile crime and to protect our juvenile citizens from dangerous situations. The juvenile ordinance has been intact for some years, and it is a valuable tool, as I stated, for the police officers to have an ability to contact our juvenile citizens when they're out beyond curfew. But really, what I want to point out is that we're protecting them from those situations out there that can become very dangerous after hours. And so some of the history of it is in 2018, we issued 24 citations, which is not a lot. So it tells me that the prevention side of the ordinance has been working. 2019, we issued 10 citations. In 2020, we issued 30. And you see the uptick, but you understand that juvenile crime during the pandemic is up across the United States. And so I really think that we need to approve this once again, move forward with it, so that we can continue to protect our juvenile citizens, and so that we can educate our parents about when a child should be in the home. This includes during school hours as well, so we can keep kids in school where they're supposed to be. We can protect them through whatever tools we have available. And also, it gives us, when we issue those citations, we understand we have a juvenile that we need to engage. We have to engage our youth. And as the chief of police here in Victoria, as we move forward in my tenure, I'm looking for opportunities to engage our youth and try to help them be productive citizens as they move into adulthood. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none, I will now open a public hearing. Is this also an emergency reading?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So this will be reading one. All right. So again, I will open a public hearing on this matter at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to it, please step forward now. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item C2.
A second. We have a motion and a second for item C2. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now move on to the next item.
Item C3 is an ordinance waiving homestead homeowner permit fees for repairs related to the February 14th through 20th, 2021 winter storm. And this item is being read on an emergency reading.
Good evening. We are recommending that we waive the homestead permit fees for repairs due to the winter storm, like we did similarly after Harvey. We weren't really sure what the demand would look like on Friday when we repair this ordinance, but we have a much better idea, and we expect to waive probably between 10 and 20 of these permits over the next month. Most of the repairs that we see need to be done are actually really minor repairs, although it doesn't feel like a minor event when you lose water. But when you get down to it, sometimes it can be just a small break that feels pretty catastrophic. So most repairs probably actually won't be requiring permits.
Okay. Any more questions for Ms. Fulgham? Hearing none, I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please step forward now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
If we adopt item C3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item C3. Any further discussion?
Mayor, the same point of clarification as on item C1. This item is being requested on an emergency basis. And so this will be a single reading of the ordinance tonight. There will not be a second and third reading, and it will require five affirmative votes.
Thank you, Mr. Gish. That all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Assume we have Mr... So now I will back up in the agenda, please, and go into the public recognitions and our proclamations. I see that everyone is here now.
All right. Whereas Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders, including Victoria's own, who have contributed to the progress of our nation, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all citizens regarding the issues of human rights and the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, now therefore I, Raleigh McCoy, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Victoria, designate the month of February 2021 as Black History Month and urge our citizens to join together in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask for Dr. Derek Hunt and Ricky Mumford to step forward, please. They will be receiving this on behalf of the urban chamber of
Move on to the next proclamation. Whereas Verlin Sandra Avery worked for the Victoria School District in food service for over 25 years, and one of Mrs. Avery's key passions was ensuring all those who she encountered were well-fed and cared for. And whereas Mrs. Avery's memory carries a legacy of compassion, drive, and tenacity, and she is recognized as a pillar in the community of Victoria, providing connections to resources for those in need. Whereas Mrs. Avery was deeply active in several multicultural events throughout the community, including school supplies drives for the Old Landmark Committee, which she founded and served as president. Whereas community members collectively recount her legacy and generous spirit as a void that will never be filled, whereas the work of Mrs. Avery will continue through community members who work closely with her, she will always be remembered as a leader who carried within her a deep love for the people of Victoria. And now therefore I, Raleigh McCoy, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Victoria, do hereby proclaim February 16th, 2021, as Verlin Sandra Avery Day in Victoria, Texas.
Thank you. We have Ms. Cheryl Wilkinson here tonight to receive this on behalf of the family.
That means you're going to come out in the picture.
You know, I think I met Mrs. Avery one time, one of the events. The only regret is that I didn't get to know her that. Because after her passing, wonderful stories came out of her, of the incredible citizens she realizes. And so we want to always remember her and what she did for our community over these years. Thank you for the head of the city of Victoria.
Can I say something? I do want to say something. Kind of caught me off guard, wasn't expecting it. So I had to reach into my preacher hat real quick to say something. But real briefly, I wanted to say I want to thank the city of Victoria, Mr. Mayor, and the council for affording this to us. 2020 has been a year of vision, but as I say, we didn't know what we were going to see. And so moving forward, I'm thankful because these things matter. And it's not for us to hold on to the past, but to understand the past so that we can move forward. And I believe that that's what the city of Victoria wants. I believe that that's what we're striving for. So I thank you for the honor on behalf of the chambers.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt, for your comments. I appreciate it. Okay. I think we now go back to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Item D1 on the consent agenda is the adoption of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 meeting. Item D2 is a resolution approving the election services contract with Victoria County Elections Administrator for Administration of City Elections. Item D3 is a resolution approving an amendment to the real estate sales contract for the sale of 10 acres of surplus land on Ben Jordan Street. Item D4 is a resolution for the annual approval of the investment policy and list of qualified brokers. And item D5 is a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing contract with Professional Turf Products LP for equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $257,035.25. Item D6 is a resolution awarding an annual supply contract to Colorado Materials LTD of Nursery Texas for hot mix asphaltic concrete type D in an estimated amount of $112,500, and a resolution awarding an annual supply contract with Quality Hot Mix Incorporated of El Campo, Texas for hot mix cold-laid asphaltic concrete type D in an estimated amount of $135,000. And item D8 is a resolution awarding the 2020/2021 strip peak project for various locations to Pavement Markings Incorporated of Donna, Texas for their competitive sealed proposal in the amount of $199,245.15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. And now move into action items for council, please.
Item E1 is a resolution awarding a contract to Brandon Paving Company LTD for the North Heights Rehab Overlay Project Phase 6 East San Antonio Street in the amount of $1,390,322.30.
Yeah?
Okay. I'm up here. We're going to tag-team it again. I got Lourdes. She's going to go through the procurement portion of this item. And I'm going to go through the agenda. It's procurement method, which is what she'll work on, and then the project overview and moving forward. So I'm going to turn over the procurement part to Lourdes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The procurement method, as y'all may recall, last month, we were up here discussing the method we would be using going forward, which is the competitive sealed proposal method under Government Code 2269. So we use that same procurement method for North Heights. With this method, we're able to procure using, based on weighted criteria. After that, we're able to rank offers, which allows us to then negotiate a price, which gives the city the ability to get the best value. The evaluation criteria for this project was price weighted at 35%, the proposed schedule 20%, past performance 20%. the proposed schedule twenty percent, past performance twenty percent, available resources ten percent, overall qualifications five percent, corporate stability history five percent, and references five percent, for a total of a hundred percent. We received four proposals: Brandon Paving, Lester Contracting, Rexco, and Tierra Lease Services. Now, the proposals submitted to us were by line item. After we received the proposals, we were able to evaluate them by a committee. The committee members consisted of Ken Gill, Daryl Seibert, Mike Petro, Todd Jerisch, and myself. After going through all the proposals, we selected the proposal that offered the best value to the city, which was submitted by Brandon Paving. So, they were selected to go through negotiations. During the negotiations, we discussed possible areas for reduction. There were none at that time. The final negotiation cost was one million, three hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents. Are there any questions as far as the procurement method used? I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Ken to discuss the project itself. Thank you.
Okay. The fun part. This is the sixth phase of the North Heights projects. We've done all five, or we're almost done. This one isn't all the way. A lot of, most of them have been from Laurent to Navarro. This one is from Cameron to Laurent. We've already done one block in there, and then the rest is part of Ditar Hospital. This includes reconstruction of the street, new curb gutter, and driveways, basically a complete reconstruction. Brandon Paving has constructed Sabine Street, Trinity, and Brazos, and is very familiar with the process of how to get this project done smoothly and in a very progressive time order to not inflict, oh, pain upon the neighbors while they're working. Here's the map of the area that we're working on, again, at San Antonio and in Ozaside Streets. And the project timeline is this is the award date. We'll execute the contract in March, and then begin construction in April and complete in approximately a year. And if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have one. They're also going to be doing Crestwood at the same time?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's not gonna be any conflict as far as our timeline?
No. They have two separate individual crews. This one is they'll work on the curb and gutter first, and there's a separate crew that does that portion. While on Crestwood, they'll be working on the utility portion, so they'll kind of overlap where they finish the North Heights curb and gutter, concrete portion, and then when the utilities are done on Crestwood, they'll be able to flip right over. And they have extra crews available on any of the items.
Okay.
Good question.
Questions for Mr. Gil?
Just a comment. I'm happy to see that this project's coming to an end after many, many years.
We're close.
No, I know, and I don't say that lightly. I'm very pleased for that entire neighborhood. It's driving down there, it's wonderful, and I know the neighbors appreciate it.
And one of the things we did on this neighborhood, we've done all the utilities, and when we put in a new utilities, new reconstruction of utilities, we'll replace the meter box, but right behind it, we put in a private cutoff. So, a lot of these, this whole area with all the new utilities, they were able to go in, open up that box, quickly turn off their water if they had any issues without having to wait for us or wait for anybody. So, that's something we're doing, and we've been doing. All of downtown is built the same way. We put in a private cutoff for all the residents or businesses.
Yeah, and I don't say that lightly. I do have the privilege of driving down some of those roads, going to the hospital, so I understand that how bad they are. As a traveler, I can imagine for the residents there, so I'm excited for them, for this to finally get done.
We're waiting for New Waisa Street, because that's a tough one.
I avoid that one.
More questions for Mr. Gil? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
A motion is second on item E one. Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Thank you. Item E two, please.
Item E two is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Victoria Engineering Incorporated, DBA Urban Engineering, for design services of the Lone Tree Acres subdivision drainage and street repairs project in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay. This is the project for Lone Tree Acres. It includes the drainage and streets. We've, this was part of the money that we had from the Texas, the Overpass Funds, Texas Hot Funds. This, wow, that was fast. Overview, it construct, it's gonna construct an outfall from this neighborhood to Lone Tree Creek. That is, one of the bigger issues is it's so flat that we need to get the water out. It just, a lot of it stands out there. Reshape those open ditches adjacent to the streets, improve the driveway culvers as necessary, and rehabilitate the streets. One thing that we're gonna look at is just different design ideas. We're not gonna get stuck on the same old way. If there's a better way to do this, a better way to attack the streets and the drainage, we're gonna be all looking at it. We've got, we've been talking about some ideas, and I'm sure we're gonna be talking more. Design contract is with Urban Engineering. We negotiated the fee for two seventy-five, seven hundred, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred. Services include surveying, design, and construction oversight. The city, we will take over the bidding of the prod, the proposal of the project, setting up the proposal, and then going ahead and doing the inspection. The construction oversight on this one, we need it because it's gonna be a lot more intensive items where they'll need to come check, and it's a very minor amount, but we feel it's integral into this project. And the construction bidding method, again, it'll be competitively sealed proposal method, and it'll include evaluation criteria, and we'll again negotiate and value engineer the project. And one thing I'd like to, I heard today from a contractor who's working on a proposal for tomorrow's job, and he actually was very positive about it. I mean, he said, "It's the way to go. It's the newest way." He said, "It gives the cities an opportunity to look at options that the contractor may give. They may give a timeframe that's better. They may give, you know, an option how to build the project, and it allows you to look at that contractor," because he said that there's a lot of contractors out there that they may be low price, but you're gonna be sorry when you get done. So, this is working out really well. I just wanna say thank you for pushing us into the twentieth century on this.
Mr. Gil, the only comment I would have too, and I noticed you mentioned that the city will be doing the inspections?
Yes.
And please make sure that we fund that adequately so that there's good inspection and oversight, even if you have to bring in third-party labs and stuff, because that is really key to making certain that the project ends up as it should. So, that's the only comment I would like.
I agree. And we have in-house inspectors that have been doing this, and they are well-versed, and I'll say this much, they're strict. I've talked to some inspectors that's gone to the other side, and he just laughed and said, "Wow, the city is harder on contractors than anybody he's ever worked with." So, I was pleased to hear that.
Well, it's a very important part of the project.
True. Project timeline, expecting design complete in October, then negotiate a drainage outfall easement also in October. Our plan would be to move that forward quickly and advertise in November, and then secure the contract documents in December, and begin construction January, February. Again, that's an aggressive schedule, so some of it may slip, but we're gonna be pushing this project to get it built.
Ken, one of my questions is, in that area, most of that area, because I live there, has got real bad open ditches?
Yes.
And that's a big problem there. So, are you planning to do anything, maybe closing up some of those ditches, or?
That's part of this project, is to first, to get the outfall built or designed and built, and then be able to address those open ditches either with an open ditch-type scenario or some other type scenario, but we definitely need to clean those out. They are flat, and when I mean flat, they're like at point-two percent. They barely flow. We need to get better flow on them, and we know that. They just hold water, and all it takes is just a little bit of grass or silt.
Well, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Gil? Hearing none, thank you very much.
And one thing before I leave, I want to echo Jesus's comments, and I want to put out a praise to our staff, our Public Works. They all worked together. They crossed over. Streets did water, water did streets. It was just, it was a great thing, and I want to compliment them here while in the public, because we really did. And we had people coming in that were supposed to be exempt, and we're finding out with Public Works, no such thing. So, I want to thank them, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Gil.
Vote to adopt item E two?
Second.
A motion is second on item E two. All those in favor? Or is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Was somebody calling?
I don't like his, Ricky?
Okay. Before Mr. Gush begins his presentation, if there's no objection, I would like for him to go through all three of these items, perhaps, and then at the end of it, we can consider it in one motion to approve all three, because they're all so interconnected. If there's no objection, then I would ask you to do that, please. Mr. Gush?
Yes, sir. Item E three is a resolution supporting passage of House Bill six thirty-three to provide an alternate method for determining prevailing wage rates for public works projects. Item E four is a resolution supporting passage of House Bill one twenty-eight to promote the development of healthcare facilities. And item E five is a resolution opposing passage of House Bill seven forty-nine, which would prohibit political subdivisions from spending money to advocate for local issues.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to update council on the legislative program that we've been running. I also want to thank Mayor McCoy, Mr. Bocknight, and Ms. Scott, who have been serving as the Council IGR Committee in reviewing the bills. I'm sorry, I just got that wrong, didn't I? No, no, I'm sorry, never.
No.
Yeah, I got it right. For some reason, I'm sorry, I just had a momentary lapse.
You put us on another committee now.
That's right. There's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and if I could just briefly give everyone a quick overview of kind of where we are and what we've been doing. You'll remember this slide from one of my earlier presentations, where I talked about this being a three-phased approach, where before the session began, we would be reviewing the pre-filled bills, seeking out expert recommendation from among city staffs, and then reaching out to council to determine what level of engagement the city wanted to have on each bill. And then, once we got into the session, we would monitor the process of those bills and actually engage at the Capitol. Once session is over, we intend to educate staff on how to implement the legislation that was adopted by the state legislature. So, as of right now, chronologically, we're in the yellow section. The session is already in place, but as far as our workflow, we're really still dealing primarily with what is happening in the green section. We're still reviewing bills as they get filed, and we're still seeking expert recommendation and council feedback on how to engage with those bills. There's been a significant number of bills already reviewed, and we have been trying to triage those bills down, sort of like a funnel, to focus on the ones that are the most important. These numbers are now weak or so old, thanks to the freeze, but there have been at least twenty-seven hundred bills filed so far in this session. A typical session will see about seventy-five hundred bills filed, and fifteen hundred of those bills will pass. So, we expect we have a long way to go in this session still. TML has summarized, has identified eight hundred and fifty of those bills as relating to city business in one way or another, and they have summarized each of those eight hundred and fifty bills. My office has been reviewing those summaries as they come out. A hundred of those eight hundred and fifty bills, we have identified as impacting our city or our city government practices in one way or another, and we are tracking those bills to see whether or not we need to engage with them. We've met with the county, with the Council IGR Committee, and there are twenty bills that we have identified that we are seeking feedback from that committee on. So far, that committee has heard eight of those twenty, and out of those eight, the committee is recommending three bills for capital engagement. So, you can see the funnel effect of the work that's been going on behind the scenes. The first time I stood up here and did this presentation on our legislative process, you heard from TML, our statewide legislative body, legislative effort body, and we could not do this without them. The work that they do to go through twenty-seven hundred bills and filter that down to eight hundred and fifty, and then summarize those for us, is the only way that we could manage this workflow. It is a significant amount of work, and I want to give a shout-out to my staff for the work that they're doing to get this process to you. So, tonight, we're bringing three bills to you, seeking for council support on the three bills. The first is House Bill six thirty-three, and I'll note, there's a quick little change to the slide here from what you saw in your initial packet. The change is also reflected in the resolution that I'm asking you to adopt tonight, because House Bill six thirty-three was filed by Representative Morrison on the city's behalf, and since then, Senator Colcorst has also filed Senate Bill five eighteen. They are companion bills, they say the same thing, and so, we're seeking support for both of these bills. Under current law, you know that any time the city is issuing a public works contract, we have to include in our contracts provisions that require our contractor to pay prevailing wages to their employees. A prevailing wage is not the same thing as minimum wage. It is, the easiest way to think about it is, it's the average wage paid within our county to somebody working within that particular sector of job. And there are several different ways to calculate what that prevailing wage is. Some of them are probably more accurate than others. Currently, under current law, you could either rely on the data that has been calculated by the federal government under the Sarbanes-Oxley Act, or you could conduct your own survey. Individual surveys are expensive, and so many cities, including Victoria, rely on the federal data, which may not be as granular as it could be and may not be as accurate as it could be. So, this bill would add an additional method into the government code to allow another way to calculate what that prevailing wage is. It does not change the requirement that prevailing wages be paid. It only changes the calculation methodology. And so, it adds in a couple of other extra methods and allows data compiled by the Texas Workforce Commission to be used as an alternate method. That data can be compiled for our local municipal statistical area, our MSA, or if there's not local data available, it can be statewide data. We believe that this bill would potentially save the city money while simultaneously guaranteeing a prevailing wage for workers in our local area. We see this as a win-win opportunity, and the committee is recommending that the council support, a resolution of support that we could then take to the state legislature to show them that the city of Victoria supports this bill in the strongest terms possible. So, that's the first of the three we have to look at tonight. Are there any questions about that bill before I move to the second one? All right. The second bill is a little more simple, a little straightforward, and I think I've clicked too many times, but that's okay. House Bill one twenty-eight is an economic development bill, and this is going to be a very straightforward bill that is gonna have an immediate, hopefully, an immediate impact within our community. The definition of primary jobs for the purposes of Economic Development Corporation projects does not currently include healthcare facilities or mental healthcare facilities, nor does the list of projects that are authorized include those kinds of facilities. And as you know, an economic development corporation like our Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation can only do projects that are authorized by the statute. So, this is an expansion of the type of projects that can be done in our community by the Sales Tax Development that can be done in our community by the Sales Tax Development Corporation. Our 25, 2035 Comprehensive Plan establishes a goal for us to increase economic development policies to assist in attracting exactly these kinds of businesses. So this is exactly the kind of state legislation that would impact our community. Last year in 2020, the Sales Tax Corporation entered into a performance agreement with Dr. Verma, with Diversified Wellness Associates is the name of his company, in order to expand a project that he was doing up on the north side on North Main. Because of the limitations in the current law, the Sales Tax Corporation was only able to incent that program by addressing some of his utility needs. There could not be a direct incentive for that project. If this legislation passes and a future project comes along, we could do direct incentives directly to that type of business from the Sales Tax Corporation because it would then be an authorized project. This is a great bill for our community, and I'm seeing state, support for this bill in other communities as well. Any questions about this one before I move on? All right. The last is House Bill 749 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 234, which is sometimes called the Community Advocacy Bill. If you read the Victoria Advocate this morning, you saw that the Commissioners Court considered a resolution at their Commissioners Court meeting yesterday where they opposed the passage of these two bills. Our committee is also recommending that we adopt a resolution opposing the passage of this bill. So let me talk a little bit about what the bill does. This bill prohibits a political subdivision like the city or the county from spending public dollars to hire professional lobbyists. I know that professional lobbyists have a bit of a dirty name, you know, a little bit like lawyers. And as a consequence, some people might see this bill and have a knee-jerk reaction that it's a good thing. But I urge everyone to consider the fact that when you need complicated things done, it is often good to hire a professional to do those things. And it is absolutely necessary that our local governmental entities have the ability to reach out to professionals who can help at the state legislature in this process. I've said it already today. We could not do what we're doing right now if it were not for TML working for us. And this bill would essentially prohibit TML from doing a lot of the activities that they're doing for us. So we are actively seeking to oppose this bill. I know the county passed a resolution yesterday along the same lines. And so I do want to, I guess, clarify that even though city employees are not lobbyists, this bill would prohibit us from being a member of TML unless TML were to cease its lobbying activities and fire anyone who is taking money as a professional lobbyist. And so this would be a significant impact on municipal activities across the state. And interestingly, it would not have the same effect on private corporate enterprises who are arguing against the things that are good for city government and regulations. So it's a very one-sided bill, and I do think it would be a good idea for us to actively oppose this bill. This is the last that I have to summarize for you. Are there any questions about this bill?
Thomas, can you add all the different public entities that are also part of this or included in this? Because it's not just cities and counties.
Thank you. That's a, that's a good point, and I meant to say that, and I skipped right over it. With, any local political subdivision would be covered by this, and so within our area, that is Victoria County and the city of Victoria, but it's also Victoria College. It's also the Navigation District. It's also any other special districts that have been created. It's any local government.
School district.
Thank you. School District is also on the list. So any of the local entities that are, that are local governmental entities in our region would be impacted by this bill. This is another bill that is getting statewide response. Obviously, TML is speaking to all of its member cities about this bill. TAC, the Texas Association of Counties, is also speaking about, is speaking to their members about it. I'm sure that TASB, the Texas Association of School Board, is also speaking to all of their members about it. This is a big bill. This is the second legislative session in a row that this bill has been filed. It was defeated in 2019, and with good work, it will be defeated again this year.
Who opposed this bill?
The, the House bill was filed by Representative Middleton, and I'm sorry, I didn't print out the Senate bill, so I don't have that name at my hands.
Would it be the same person that brought it back up in 2019?
I'm sorry, I also don't know the answer to that question. I believe the answer is yes.
Yeah, he's head of the Freedom Caucus.
I believe it actually passed in the Senate and was defeated in the House.
Yes.
So it almost made it. So that's why it's very important that, that we step forward because I think we need to be able to represent our constituents to the best of our ability. And, and it's a two-part process, what we can do as council members, and then what our staff brings to us. And that's why I'm very pleased that we have established this more proactive process in watching legislation that affects us and affects the livelihoods of our constituents.
Mayor, I appreciate those kind words, but if I could clarify one thing that you just said, this process that we're doing this year is a very active process. It's more active than the city of Victoria has done in the past, but I want to be very clear, it is still a reactive process. We are still reviewing bills and reacting to them. I hope that in the future, the city will continue to grow this program so that we can become a proactive city. I think there's a lot for the city still to do in this area, but I thank you for your kind words about the activity that we're doing.
Well, and I think you and I discussed issues this morning that sometimes there are regulations that also put restrictions on what we can do and activate that are put on by the state. And being active about it is not just accepting that as the, as the norm. And if we've, if we see where things like that are impeding us, then I, we should be active in going to the legislature to remedy those types of things.
Yes, sir. One last thing, Mayor, before you call the question. I just want to make sure that, that all members of city council and certain of the public who are watching this on TV understand what we mean when we talk about a resolution of support or a resolution of opposition. These resolutions that we're adopting set forth the explanation for the reasons why we support or oppose a bill, and then they, below the line, now therefore be it resolved, they say that the city of Victoria is in support of this legislation or opposes this legislation. And the reason that we do this is because my staff will then take these resolutions, and we will share them immediately with Representative Morrison's office and Senator Colcorst's office. And then when these bills get assigned to committee, we'll be sharing those resolutions with the committee members who are going to be reviewing those bills in Austin. And should the bills make it out of committee, we'll be using these resolutions to refer to all members of the House or Senate who have an opportunity to vote on these bills. These resolutions become the doorway, the pathway with which we use to access the state legislature. And so it's an important, important vehicle for us to say we have the support of the elected representatives of our community when we're reaching out to them. So I thank you for, for considering these resolutions.
Thomas, I have one question. When you were talking about the prevailing wage, I was just trying to formulate the question in my mind. I hope I can come up with it right. The prevailing wage, the way you're talking about using the local Texas workforce figures and things like that, would it ever come up to where the prevailing wage was equal to the federal rates so that way we would have to come back and change that?
That's a great question, and, and the reason I think it's a great question is because I had to ask it myself initially at the beginning of it. And it is certainly possible that the local workforce commission might conduct their own survey and return a number that is higher than the number we're currently using. The good thing about this bill, though, is it allows us to choose which of those options we want, because we'll have that information before we go out for bids.
Okay.
And so then we get to choose, do we want to use the federal Sarbanes-Oxley numbers?
Uh huh.
I'm sorry, I've said Sarbanes-Oxley twice, and it's Davis Bacon, isn't it?
Davis Bacon.
Yeah, it's a bacon.
Y'all were being kind to me for not correcting me on the floor, but thank you. That's the Davis Bacon Act.
Yes.
We can use whichever of those numbers we want.
Okay, so we're not locking ourselves into the prevailing rate if it's not, okay.
That's correct. We're, we're still going to make sure that workers are paid the prevailing wage in our area. We just want to know what an accurate number is for them.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions for Mr. Goush? If not, as I mentioned before, I would entertain a motion that adopts all three of these.
I move to adopt item E3, E4, and E5.
Second. A motion and second on those three items. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify that that means we are supporting the first two, E3 and E4, and opposing the House Bill 749 and E5.
Thank you, Mr. Bocknight. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting those three items say so by proclaiming your aye at this time.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Thank you, Mr. Goush. And thank you for, committee members for the extra time put in to.
Look forward to more.
Report these things. Okay, we'll move on now to city managers' reports.
Yes, sir. We're at that time of year again where we begin doing our various departmental annual reports. This is a very important time because it really sets the foundation for our budget development process that we go into and, that we go through and into with you in the summer. And so we want to kick it off tonight with annual reports from our CBB and from Main Street. And so I want to toss it over to Joel to kick us off, talking to us about all the great things they're doing with CBB.
Thank you very much, Jesus. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time this evening. I will be presenting our annual report year 2020 for the convention and Visitors Bureau. So just a breakdown of how we've structured our report this evening. We'll be addressing the impacts of COVID-19 on our department. Nationwide, the tourism industry was one of the most heavily impacted industries due to COVID-19, and we'll touch on what those impacts were here in the community. Then we'll address the Victoria Lodging Performance Statistics and a couple of graphs and charts on that, followed by our departmental statistics and metrics that we have for our department, accomplishments in projects that we completed in the year 2020, and our upcoming projects and events. So just a breakdown of, to see graphically where you can see how many events we had truly canceled by COVID-19. Victoria is a, a city that's very proud of its events. We have some great annual events here for a community of our size, a good mix of outdoor recreation, arts and culture, live music. And we have leaned on those events heavily in the past in our marketing efforts, both traditional marketing, digital marketing, social media. And then you could just see a breakdown of all those events that were canceled due to COVID-19 the last year. You see primarily Boot Fest 2020 on there, a good number of great, exciting sports events that we had planned for the springtime. And then you also see a list of major events that we had that were presented with a limited capacity or presented digitally. This included some arts performance as well as some City of Victoria events, like the Lighted Christmas Parade. Following that is a graphic representing our lodging performance statistics for the year. As you can see in our community, as was the case with many communities, we were pretty much down across the board. You see a couple of outliers there, primarily August of 2020, which was after the peak COVID times of the spring, which was surprising. We saw quite an uptick in occupancy rate there. We reached out to the hotels to see what was generating that, and it was a mix of business as well as some outdoor recreation travel. That comes kind of activities that are allowed for social distancing and promote that. But as a whole, you can see the occupancy rate, average daily rate, and then the RevPAR for the year. Revenue per available room is what RevPAR stands for, and that is another metric the industry uses where it's basically your occupancy rate times your average daily rate. But most folks are familiar with the occupancy rate. You can see we had a few outliers there, but primarily we were down. But compared to the state as a whole, we have some figures. Now, this is presented annually, but looking at a fiscal year, we were pretty much in line with a majority of the, the state of Texas. That was around 53%, but if you count in the metro areas, which actually by occupancy rate did worse than us, the state average for the fiscal year of 2020 is a little over, just a little over 50%. So as far as occupancy goes, we did better. Our average daily rate, of course, was lower than, than the state average because you count, you factor in the San Antonios and the Austins and the Houston's and that. Their average daily rate was a little over $90 a night per room. But if you count in the, not the metro areas, we were in line. The average daily rate and the, not counting the metro areas, was a little over, almost $75, and then the RevPAR was almost 40, which we were as well. So if you're looking at the fiscal year, we're pretty much, of Texas, we were pretty much in line with that. Here's a graph showing the occupancy rate and the, obviously, the COVID effect that you had there beginning in March. Primarily, we were affected in March, April, May, and June, but you saw by July, we were pretty much back in line with, with what we had done the year prior. And you even see a, a couple of months, you see the August month where, where we went above the year before. So the occupancy rate for our community bounced back rather strongly compared to the depressed rates you would see in some of the other communities. The next graph shows our average daily rate, and I just kind of wanted to compare these to show that even though the occupancy rate, you saw the huge dip it took there, the average daily rate really didn't go down that much. So even regardless of the occupancy rate, your hoteliers are not going to necessarily be slashing prices to make up for, for lost revenue. So the, the rate stays relatively stable regardless of the occupancy. It does go down, but you're not going to see a core, strong, you know, direct correlation with the, the occupancy rate to the, to the rate of the room charge. Our departmental statistics, going back to last two years and then looking at our 2021 goal, you can see we were down on our website visits and social media reach. Of course, that was attributed highly to a loss of our events. Looking at our 2021 goal, to counter that, we are going to be focusing on those activities that people can do year-round, social distancing, of course, outdoor recreation, our, our rich history in the community, our history trail, our Old Victoria Driving Tour. We have also developed a number of itineraries on our website, themed trips, trip ideas that we'll be promoting on our social media that highlight attractions and restaurants, and not necessarily looking to, to bank on events, which at this time, there's still not a lot of events that have, have confirmed for this year. Visitor Center visits, of course, were, were highly down, and we're anticipating that to continue. Right now, we're averaging about 40 to 50 visitors a month, and that's just due to COVID, and, and, you know, our facilities are open, and we let folks know about that, but not a lot of foot traffic through the door. The bottom statistic is not affected that much by, by COVID-19. That's the travel info leads, and we receive those primarily from paid advertising spots in magazines, print publications, as well as through some digital means. Year 2020 accomplishments. To touch on a few of the projects we completed this year, we did update our, our wayfinding signs around town, launched the new explorevictoriatexas.com website in April, a design of a brand-new visitor guide, complete replacement of all brochure racks in local places, administration of the Hot Funds Award process for the first time in conjunction with the legal department, received our Texas Music Friendly Community designation, established our Tourism Advisory Board, upgrades to the Street 10 Friends signs, and some holiday promotions, which I'll, I'll touch on here in a minute. But our wayfinding signs, we did have 19 locations around the community that we either updated or replaced. That included adding the Children's Discovery Museum to a couple of locations. When we first established these signs, they didn't have a permanent home yet. That also included replacing and repairing some damaged signs just from accidents and things like that that had happened to them. So we did complete that project last spring, launching of our new explorevictoriatexas.com website in April. So there are some great tools on there for users to plan their trip to Victoria. We have an itinerary builder tool. As I mentioned, trip ideas, themed itineraries. We also have some partner tools on there as well. On events, our events calendar, there's a creative event. We've shared that with, also just added a downtown category for, for the downtown locations to add their events to that. Also, our film-friendly guidelines on there, filming permit applications, as well as meeting, meeting service request forms. So a number of tools on there for partners, but also for, for visitors to plan their trip to Victoria. A very responsive site, a great company called Sapphire, who are you working with now, who works with a lot of communities our size, such as Laredo, McAllen, Conroe, San Angelo. So they've been a great company to work with. Any updates? Any updates and features that we'd like to add to the site? We're continually updating that, and we have that support. Our new visitor guide, recently redesigned to fit into our branding. We also offer this online in a digital component, digital flip book. So that is available on the explorevictoriatexas.com website. And that has, of course, your listings, family attractions, annual events, just an updated, fresh look with great new photography that fits in with our other two items. A couple of members in my department refer to this as the trilogy, which is our visitor guide, visitor map, and Old Victoria Driving Tour Guide, which is our three most popular publications. And then I mentioned the updated brochure racks. We have these now throughout, all locations throughout the community, many downtown locations, all our hotels and motels, RV parks, bed and breakfasts, and attractions here in the communities. So a majority of those locations do have our rack. If not, they have their own wall rack or some other material that they prefer to use, but most locations do have that now. As I mentioned, the Hot Funds Award process, we oversaw this for the first time in conjunction with the legal department. They, you know, kind of assisted us as we were developing this. Of course, it worked with, we worked with the Hot Funds Committee, the ad hoc committee to determine the awarding amount recommendation for council. Had sixteen applying organizations, events, all received awards. We've had a few that won't be receiving their award. For instance, the Texas Mile, they moved locations, but a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand was granted. And you see that timeline there, primarily went through the summer, July of 2020. Applications, advertisements were out, submissions accepted. In August, the committee reviewed the applications and finalized the recommendation, brought forward to council for adopting the funding resolution. And then in October 2020, the contracts became effective with the beginning of the new fiscal year. Our Texas Music Friendly Community Designation, which we're very excited about, completed that in November, have had a meeting with the advisory board, a very passionate group of individuals. We actually have thirteen members on that board, and that includes the members of the promotional community, live music promoters, venue owners. So it's Mike Rivera, Ruben Quintanilla, Rick Colley, Angela Weaver, Randy Wachtel, David Foskis, Trey Newman, Caleb Stout, Danny Vivian, Michael Graff, Mark Inahosa, Chris McDowell, and Amy Tupa. So a lot of excitement and passion on that group. I think we're going to come up with some great projects to support Victoria's live music industry going forward and develop that as, you know, that's a really important part of our tourism product and our fabric of our community. So there's going to be some great projects that come out of that group. The Tourism Advisory Board, and this is a little bit more formal of a board. This was to advise the CBB on advertising and other activities. There are thirteen non-voting members and nine, five, excuse me, non-voting ex officio members. That process, Oakland for applications in October. In November, they were closed, and applications were collated by city staff. The board appointments in December and January, and next week, we will have our first quarterly board meeting. So looking forward to getting their feedback on our current efforts, their ideas of what we could promote. And this will also, this committee will also, or this board, excuse me, will also serve to oversee the Hot Funds Award process going forward. So it will replace that ad hoc Hot Funds Committee for that. But the process for it will be, the timeline for that process will, we anticipate, be around the same time of year. Another project that we undertook this year, the Street of Ten Friends sign. Around summertime, we had noticed that the sign was becoming in a state of disrepair. You know, I reached out to a couple of departments, and there was really no ownership of the sign, and I said, you know, we'll take it on. So, you know, it's really kind of the gateway to downtown, and it's, you know, just a true piece of Victoria's history. So that was the sign as it stood in May of 2020. And this is the sign as it stands a few days ago, before the spring, before the freeze, excuse me. But, you know, thanks, thanks Community Appearance Division, they did wrap those plants, and it looks like a few of them made it out of there. So we thanked them for that. But that project included a cleaning of the existing framework. We rebuilt the roof that was blown off in Hurricane Harvey and damaged, destroyed. And then we replaced that sign that was there with, actually, I did a little research, and we had a sign in storage that was the original Tom Jones carving that had been damaged a few years back, had been rebuilt, and it just hadn't been replaced. A replica had been put in its place, and we thought this sign really deserved a place of honor. It's got a great history with Victoria. Tom Jones has done just incredible work throughout the community. You can see his works in a number of places. So we replaced that sign, thanked you to the Building Services Department, they replaced the hardware, and we had the landscaping by the Community Appearance Division. And you can't see in the photo, I took that shortly, but there, before this was installed, but there is also some bench seating there for photo opportunities or for people to relax. So it is a great gateway into downtown Victoria now. Some holiday promotions that we undertook this year, we were willing to embrace the spirit of the holidays, especially with the long year everyone had. So one promotion we developed, which was really appreciated by our local retailers, was the You'll Love Shopping Victoria holiday promotion. It involved a stamp booklet. We had over twenty retailers participate, and each participant had to go into at least ten locations and get a stamp of no purchase necessary, but at least get a stamp. We had over, around thirty-five participants, so that's three, at least three hundred visits into stores that may not have happened during the holiday season. We had, and of course, you have the number of folks who may not have turned into booklet, but visited a few locations. Our retailers were very enthusiastic about it. We had received some positive press on it, and it's a promotion that we want to make an annual thing because it promotes Victoria, it promotes an industry at a time when they really need it, and it gets foot traffic in the door, which is just all, a win all the way around. Another promotion we had, the holiday season, was taking Elfie Promotion. This one came up pretty quick, but we ordered three of these Elfie selfie stations, just encouraged people to tag us and Main Street on social media. I've recorded, at least from my research, well over fifty photos of people just enjoying themselves and their families in downtown Victoria. So we had two in Daleon Plaza. One, you see on the far left, was further down the street next to the Soiree Event Center. So just some way to spread some holiday cheer, and people really enjoyed them, and we did see a lot of people walking around, just Daleon Plaza in general and downtown Victoria this holiday season. Some upcoming projects we have for this year. We are really excited about a project that's underway right now at the Hiller House. One thing that we recognize is birding is a growing industry in this, in tourism in general. Victoria has some great assets as far as it goes as birding and great natural assets. One thing we realized is, you know, where do birders start, especially novice birders? You know, where do you begin? We noticed that the Hiller House is now being utilized by Key Victoria Beautiful, but had this great deck looking over this wonderful natural area and nothing really on it. So we're going to put some interpretive displays up there, some seating, we're installing some feeders, having brochures there, sign-in books, free little promotional cardboard binoculars with our website on there, and going to promote that heavily as a way for people to get started on a birding adventure in Victoria, if you will. So that is a project that we're very excited about. Also, digitizing our Old Victoria Driving Tour Guide through the story maps, working with our GIS department on finalizing a template for that and getting that set up this year. Also, some, working with some upcoming spring sports events. These are going to be very, very important going forward, especially with COVID-19 with, you know, meetings and conventions being depressed. We're seeing a return of some great sports events, a number of, at least five fast pitch tournaments this spring, a number of golf tournaments through UHV's efforts. So myself and staff are working on services for that because we really want to make those folks feel welcome and bring them back because that's going to be very important for, especially our hotel market this spring. Working with Parks and Rec on a sports events sales bid book. We have a bid book for meetings and conventions at the time, but nothing specifically with sports. You know, we were able to secure the TAF bid and the TAF Winter Games, and we were thinking, you know, going forward, you know, work with Parks and Rec, and we would, we would help design and put the bill for a sports event sales book. You know, Parks and Rec, they've got the facilities, and we got the marketing know-how. We can work together to help bring more sports events to Victoria. Also, some ways to help residents explore Victoria, going around to local radio shows. I've already visited one this, yesterday morning, and I'm going to be working ninety-four-seven, one oh four-seven, Kicks one oh eight, to be going and making regular appearances on there just to help residents as ways to explore their community. Also, working with the airport, helping them with some concierge efforts, ways to market the new United Express Line, and also the new visitor center project, which is continuing on. Just kind of a concept, and we've developed in our office, and myself, talking with Derek, and how the CBB can not only, you know, just be in its traditional sense and be seen as, you know, marketing Victoria and bringing people overnight, but how can we best serve? And one thing we say sometimes is find a need and fill a void, both internally with other city departments and externally with tourism partners. So examples of that, I mentioned establishing a concierge desk at the Victoria Regional Airport, definitely a digital component, possibly an in-person component as well, depending on especially high-traffic times like the holidays. We also helped out the Victoria Open Disc Golf Tournament the last weekend with some emergency propane heating units when we saw that the weather was going to be pretty inclement for those folks, you know. Looking in the twenties, we didn't want anybody, you know, getting ill or anything like that. So we provided some heating units for those folks. Again, helping residents find ways to experience their city, the sales, the sports event sales book with Parks and Rec, and also continuing to work with the Main Street program on how we can work together because so much of what we do in Main Street are very closely related in terms of our efforts to promote the community in downtown. So how we can help with tours and events, they have that event coming up on March twentieth. Danielle and I have been in communication on that. So we just want to find ways that we can, you know, further service not only other city departments, but our tours and partners. So at this time, that is my annual report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On your website visits, can you break it down into how many are from mobile visits?
I could. I could dive down further into that information. I don't have that slide or information at this time, Councilman Lawfgram, but I could break that down.
And is your mobile site very similar to your computer site?
Yes, mobile and desktop are the same site because the new concept basically now is mobile responsive sites, which our site is. You know, working with an agency like Sapphire, they made sure, we made sure that we had a site that was mobile responsive. So I could break down the number of users as well as for desktop related to mobile, but the site itself is not necessarily a different site. If that makes sense.
One thing I'd like to see is on the city website, and maybe it's there and I don't know it, it'd be nice if there was an Explore Victoria right on the front page so that if somebody went to the city website, they could click on it and go to your site instantaneously. I don't think it's there, but to me, it would be a good idea.
Yes, we are listed under the department, but some kind of widget or something like that we could discuss.
But you have to go through, and it'd be nice if it was right there on the main, when you pull up the city's website, there's Explore Victoria right there, and you can click on it and you go to your website.
Absolutely, we can discuss that with communications, absolutely.
Yeah, the questions for Mr. Novosad? Thank you very much for your.
Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. As Joe mentioned, there's a lot of overlap with Main Street in terms of their efforts, and so appropriately so, Danielle will go through the annual report for Main Street.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I do have the 2020 annual report here for Victoria Main Street Program. I have a couple of videos to show you tonight and a lot of information to cover, this being the first year that the city has taken on the Main Street Program. So here we go. So what I'm going to try to cover tonight is a basic overview of the Main Street Program and the other programs that we are affiliates of, such as the Main Street America Program Membership and the Texas Historical Commission. And then we'll break it down as far as what our guidelines are, and that is based around the four-point approach that is given to us by the Main Street America Organization. We'll talk more about the Victoria Main Street Board and our local organization that we've developed over the past year. And then we get down into those areas of the four-point approach, which is design, economic vitality. I'll touch a little bit on our facade grant program, promotion, and then we'll get into the future and what we have planned in the future. All right, so as an affiliate member of the Texas Main Street Historical Commission, which is our state-level membership, they provide us a lot of different services, and then I therefore help the community members with offering some of those same services from my level. So the way we're kind of structured is we have the Main Street America, that's our parent organization, then we have the state, Texas Main Street Program, and then there's me that falls underneath that. And we are designated as an urban Main Street Program and not a rural Main Street Program based on our population. And we're in comparison with San Angelo or San Marcos based on the population. So it's a little bit different structure than some of your smaller Main Street Programs. And so we promote unified quality image of the business district. We create attractive quality image of downtown by capitalizing on its unique assets and heritage. We do a lot of economic development and economic restructuring and repurposing of old buildings and try to stimulate those investments for those that might be interested. Comprehensive training for Main Street managers, such as myself and the board members, that's something that's offered through the Texas Main Street, Texas Historical Commission. And they also help us with architectural design assistance, which is free to those that might need or want that assistance when they want to rehabilitate their building downtown. They also provide consultations with downtown merchants about visual merchandising and window displays, and I also assist with that as well. We always try to develop heritage tourism programs, just like Joel was mentioning before. We work together a lot on a lot of different programs, and we look forward to try to offer some of those in the future as we, hopefully, COVID-19 starts to die down. And then every, every community benefits from being a Main Street Program and has experienced growth and development in their downtown. And I think this past year has been kind of telling of that, just by us really coming together and making it a supported focus on our downtown area. So the four-point approach is, like I mentioned before, economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion. And this is basically how we try to line out all of our goals and objectives for the Main Street Board and myself, and it helps us, you know, stay, stay on task with that community transformation is the ultimate goal for our downtown area. So economic vitality focuses on building a diverse economic base and catalyze smart new investment and cultivating a strong entrepreneurship ecosystem. Design focuses on creating and inviting an inclusive atmosphere, celebrating our historic character, and foster accessible, people-centered public spaces. Promotion is simply what it is, marketing the downtown area, communicating unique features through storytelling, and support by local experience. An organization is really focusing on the organization as itself with the board and our bylaws and things to that nature, but also ensuring the broad community engagement and forging partnerships across the sectors. So as we focus more in on the organization transition, here are some things that we have done in the past year in 2020 that leans on those. And so, again, we successfully transitioned Victoria Main Street Program from a standalone entity to now a city department. We took a organization that was somewhat idle and sometime, and we revamped it, and we, I attended the Main Street Managers along, Main Street Manager Training along with Mike, ATN, and we made sure that our Main Street Board vacancies were filled immediately. We established new bylaws. We had accountability agreements for the board members to sign. We record attendance. We have consistent meetings because that was some of the feedback that I had received from some of the previous board members is we needed the consistency in the meetings. And we established the subcommittee chairs based on the four-point approach. And along with that comes work plans, and we'll dive into that a little bit more later. And we also have a strong foundation for the Main Street vision, division now, and the board is beginning in providing a responsible division for the citizens that live, work, and visit in downtown Victoria. So here is a list of our current board members. We have Christine Blaine, who is the president, Sarah Hammond, Vice President, Bobby Leon, the Treasurer, Beth Koontz, Secretary, Mark Inahosa, Lasina Simmons, Rachel Adame, Allison Griffin, Genevieve Robles, Sarah Vella, Ashley Thomas, Dr. Young, and Mr. Rafael Delagarsa. And as you may notice, a lot of those folks either work, own a business, or live in downtown. So they are key stakeholders for our board, and they are invested in what we have going. Now, the subcommittee chairs, those were volunteer chairs, organization chair is Organization chair is Sarah Hammond, promotion is Genevieve Robles, design is Allison Griffin and economic vitality is Ashley Thomas. And that's a picture of most of us from the tree lighting ceremony that we had this past December in front of the tree. Okay. So diving into more of the organization, the four-point approach and the work plans, when we have our subcommittee chairs, they are each giving a work plan or a list of tasks that fall in line with those different sectors of the four-point approach. And we use those as tools, like I mentioned before, to achieve our goals and objectives. And some of the items are as follows. So under economic vitality, one of the things that we had in the past was Ashley and I worked together to designate a list of buildings that would benefit most from a facade grant. And then we would go and actively target those to see if they'd be interested in participating in the grant. Under the promotions chair, Genevieve has been an awesome key player with developing events, scheduling dates on when we might have outdoor events such as tunes at noon and hiring those musicians for me. The organization chair, we actively reviewed the bylaws and we came up with some recommendations that we also ran through Thomas's office and approved those. And then under the design, I worked with Allison on developing ideas and ways to make downtown more inviting and aesthetically pleasing. Now we're moving into the design approach. Last year we had, I had purchased and had installed street pole banners. I think most of y'all have probably seen those, just to welcome the historic, welcome everybody downtown and let, let everybody know that, hey, this is Main Street, you have arrived. And we have those on a quarterly basis. So coming up in the spring, you'll see some new ones. Then we established the facade grant guidelines and we are currently seeking applicants and I'll dive more into that later. We purchased and hung the hanging flower baskets around Deleon Plaza, which was, had a lot of help with the community appearance team putting those up and we'll see a picture of them doing that later. But that, I got a lot of positive feedback on just some hanging planters and it makes a difference. As you know, when you plant and you add color in downtown, it makes a very nice difference in downtown. As mentioned before, I worked with CBB and Community Appearance Team to help with installing the Street at Ten France sign and they did a wonderful job on the flower bed and we have gotten nothing but great feedback on that space. And then we began working towards painting all the benches, benches, trash cans and planters black to match the streetscape theme with the help of Keep Victoria Beautiful and the Community Appearance Team. All right, so as part of being a affiliate member with the Texas Main Street program, I have to submit an annual report to them as well. So a lot of the information you're seeing tonight is what I have also presented to them. And this is really the meat and bones of what I send off to the state. And so they want to know the dollars spent in downtown, how many jobs were created and what new businesses were established. So approximately $2.4 million of private slash public investment was put in downtown this past year. That with four total business starts, expansions and/or relocations. It was approximately a net gain of 25 more jobs in downtown. Out of those funds that were spent, there was 12 privately funded renovations to some downtown building and one was public funded renovation and that was the county commissioners' court when they remodeled that area. Another thing that happened last year was the convent was purchased, purchased by St. Mary's Church and been working with Father Christopher and he has some really great and exciting plans for that space. Again, we developed a facade grant brochure and a development guide brochure. So I have actual hard copies in my office of those two documents where it kind of walks people through the guidelines for the grant and some basic guidelines on what steps are needed to, you need to take when you're going to develop in the downtown area or rehab an old building. We guided downtown business owners through all the available SBA loans and local assistance during the pandemic. We began the master plan, the downtown master plan last year. We also started the lawn vegetation contract with Ground Effects Lawn Services and that's been ongoing. And so another part of what I sent to the state in requirement was before and after photos of the new businesses. So in the next slide, I have a video that I'm going to show you of some of those before and after photos. It takes a little bit for it to get to the next slide, but the first one, we will be looking at Vela Farms. All right, so here is a before photo of the front facade of what was known as Victoria Hardware, but is now the third location of Vela Farms. Here's some interior photos of when they started to build the kitchen out on the dining room area side. And if you've been, there's two separate sides. You kind of have a retail side and then you have the dining and the buffet line side. These are the after photos of the front of the facade with the added paint and hanging planters and more vegetation in the outdoor dining. Then you have the retail side picture on the right showing where she sells a lot of her spices and jams. These photos are also of the dining area at a Cars and Coffee event that we hosted. And you can see that they have new lights, they've cleaned up the floors, the kitchen, that wall in the back, sorry, the wall in the back is where the kitchen is. So they've installed the kitchen and it's created a really nice space. So the next space is Texian Books and Bethune &amp; Sons at 201 South Main, which was once the Lappin Building. They have, you have the outside there and then there's the inside of the before. They ripped out a lot of walls, a lot of flooring and the transformation has been very, it's very substantial. They even took out part of that front wall there. That's the front of the building in the inside and they created a little reading nook for the children off to the right. And then you have the exterior with the new paint, they improved awning. And then on the right, you have the new floors. Of course, they have all their furniture in there now, but this is what it was before they completely moved in. So you have new lighting, you have the mural on the wall for Texian side and it's split too. So you have Texian Books down the right side of the building and then you have, I'm sorry, Bethune &amp; Sons on the right side of the building and then Texian Books on the left. And the last one we have is the French Salon at 121 East Constitution Street. That is owned by Kelly Pierce, who once owned the split-in salon and she's moved and expanded over there on Constitution. So on the inside, they had gutted it and they have also added a living space in the upstairs. And then they repainted the facade and added some new lumber there to hold up the lights. You can see the before and after photos there. And then there's a better picture of the facade on the outside. And then on the inside, you can start to see the improvements with the apartment in the back. And then there you have the salon itself and she plans to have events and also sell retail items in that space as well. All right. So diving into a little bit more of the facade grant program, this is basically just kind of giving a high level view of some background information and a quick update on what we have going on right now. So this grant is a 50/50 matching grant with a cap of $10,000. The total amount that I have is $50,000 and this program is funded by the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. There is an online form on the Victoria Main Street program website and that form is filled out and submitted to myself and then we review it. I do the initial reviews to make sure it meets all the upfront criteria and then I pass it on to the help of Development Services Fire Marshal Team and Jeff Wright with Victoria County Historic Preservation. And they help me with the next step to see what are some of those things that can be done to help preserve the history of those buildings. And some of the eligible items are exterior signage, painting, extensive cleaning, removal of slipcovers, window repairs, lighting, et cetera. And the full list can be found again at victoriamainstreet.org. It's a pretty extensive list and it's mostly for exterior items and not for interior items, hence the name facade grant. It's supposed to be for the outside. And then again, funds are available on a first, first come, first served basis until funds are depleted. We have the facade grant brochure also on the website and right now I currently have seven applications under review.
And just very quickly, we hope that the program is successful enough to the point where it puts us in a position where we actually recommend a budget amendment. Because if we receive, you know, a bunch of awesome projects that, I'm going to make up a number, you know, total $70,000 in requests and we only have 50, you know, at that point we would probably go to VSTDC and to you and say, hey, let's just make a budget amendment and get all these projects done. We're not quite there yet, but I just want to put that plug in your ear because I think we are trending in that direction, based on the projects that we have seen already submitted.
Would that facade grant include anything with the greenery and plants and stuff outside or not?
Landscaping has been left out of the, it's mostly for the infrastructure, the building itself.
Because don't you require that they have?
Something that's going to last.
Oh, okay, but I thought you had a requirement that, you know, you had to have some kind of landscaping, so I was just asking.
No.
Okay.
All right. Okay, moving into the promotion approach. Again, we had the seasonal street pole banner, well, street pole banners installed. We had signage for restaurants and retails during the COVID-19 closures. So as you see in that one picture, we have no parking pickup and delivery only. We, we purchased those signs and deployed them out for those folks who are doing the to-go option for the restaurants in downtown. We purchased and installed the Christmas tree and holiday lights on the facades. We had more lit holiday decorations in Deleon Plaza. We also had window paintings provided by Free Art Victoria and one of those is the snowman up, up top on Texian Books window. Another idea that, that evolved is typically you see an Imagine Possibilities tour where you have like an open house, if you will, of all the vacant stores and buildings in downtown. And you come and you tour and you see and you want to look and see what's inside and kind of get a feel for what could go in that space. So a lot of Main Streets across the state opted for a virtual Imagine the Possibilities tour. And I do have one video of one space, it's the Thomas Barnes Building on 108 North Main Street. And that's the first of more. I plan on having more coming out very soon this year and that will be considered as my Imagine the Possibilities tour. I'll show that video on the next slide. Some of the events for added promotion that we initiated was Artisan Market or Market on Main, tunes at noon, movie series at the Leo J. Welder Center, Dia de los Muertos and Cars and Coffee. And we reactivated the Facebook and Instagram pages. As you can see, the, the followers have gone up. They've probably even gone, gone up since I made this presentation. And we also initiated a monthly newsletter that has 180 email contacts with a 56% over rate. And those are just various pictures too of the Artisan Market and the events that we had this past year. So the next slide should be the video. Nope, clicked too fast.
This historic building started as the original location of First National Bank. John Milton Bronson opened Bronson's Bank, Victoria's first bank in October 1867. In 1883, he constructed a new brick building to house the bank. The building shown here stands on Main Street across from Deleon Plaza, although the facade has been covered. This building offers an immediate retail showroom downstairs with an adjoining work area featuring a sink. Street parking is available on Main Street with available off-street parking in the rear for rent. This location would be great for a restaurant, professional, salon or retail establishment such as a jewelry store or boutique. This is a prime location in downtown Victoria overlooking Deleon Plaza and the 1892 Victoria County Courthouse. Downtown Victoria features a small-town atmosphere and benefits from the diversity of industries as well as being the seat of Victoria County. Downtown contributes to the community's overall quality of life by providing opportunities for economic growth as well as entertainment. So let's hear it, Victoria. What type of business do you think needs to be located in this location right across from the beautiful Deleon Plaza?
Okay, and, and since we posted that video, it has gotten 1,700 views. The property is still for sale, but we've had a few bites, so it's been working out very nicely. So for the future, we plan to complete the downtown master plan and that's the website where you can find all the current updates on the master plan as it is today. I continue, I want to continue improving the landscaping at Deleon Plaza and City Hall. I am working towards developing a holiday decorating five-year plan to build on the Christmas tree and decorations in downtown. I want to, again, continue to develop the virtual Imagine the Possibilities tour such as the video you just saw. Host more consistent events such as tunes at noon, market on Main, First Friday's Art Walk, haunted tours, et cetera. Want to add crosswalk art around Deleon Plaza. Continue to work with local partners to fill vacant spaces and help entrepreneurs fulfill their dreams. Continue to work, oh, sorry, continue to work with UHP School of Business to help develop an entrepreneurship center and a place for an innovation collective location. And then continue to work with VDC, VSTDC and SBDC to help guide local and outside developers and entrepreneurs. And that picture to your left is actually a part of the future. That will be the new location for the Chick-fil-A administrative office. So it is not going to be an eatery. I just want to make that clear. It's actually going to be where Mr. David Murphy and his team will work. They will also offer all their employee trainings out of that building and potentially even reach out and help their employees with their continued education services that they provide to their staff. So that's pretty exciting. That's on Constitution Street, by the way, right across the street from the French Salon. So this being the first year that the city has taken on Main Street as a department, I kind of like to think of it as raising a child. It takes a village. And I want to be sure and thank all of the local partners, your support, the departments that helped me such as parks, streets, development services, fire, PD, all those folks that helped last year be a successful year as the first year getting it off and, and running. And so with that, I have a third and final video thanking all of those folks for helping in making that a successful year. All right. Thank you all again. And if y'all have any questions, I am ready for your questions.
Danielle, I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment. I do want to thank you for your vision, your, you've been a breath of fresh air for, for the Main Street program. Honored to serve on the board with you and excited for the future of downtown with you at the, at the head of it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You've, you've accomplished a lot in one year.
I had a lot of help.
I have a little, little question about the Christmas decorations because we talked about the tree and Joel talked about the elfies.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, but the, the ornament that was straddling the sidewalk. I think I saw more pictures of people because they could get families, so they could get the tree in the background. I want to make sure that's part of the display and not just a one-time deal.
No, that, that's in storage right now and we'll put it back out there next year.
Great.
All right, well, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further reports, Mr. Garzen?
No, so those are all the city manager reports that we have for tonight. I will make a, a note that in your read files, we did include the racial profiling. No, so those are all the city manager reports that uh, we have for tonight. I will make a, a note that in your read files, we did include the racial profiling reports for Police Department and Fire Marshal's Office. Um, those do need to be submitted to you on an annual basis, not necessarily presented. Um, but I just wanted to uh, mention that. Um, we will be working on placing um, them online and making them accessible as well. Um, but I just wanted to, for the record, mention that you have received those. We have submitted them to you.
Yeah, well, that pretty much concludes our open session tonight. I think we have two items in executive session. If you would uh, go through those, Ms. Hilvich.
The City Council will recess into executive session on the 23rd day of February 2021 at 7:08 PM. Um, pursuant to the Texas Government Code, um, 551.103A, um, a government body is exempted from the requirements to keep certified agendas for the proceedings. And the executive sessions are going to be covering um, an executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property interest due to the fact that deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with the third party. And an executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.087 to discuss, deliberate the offer or a offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the City Council seeks to have, locate, stay or expand in or near the territory of the City of Victoria and, and with which the City of Victoria is conducting economic development, development negotiations.
Thank you very much. I don't expect, there will be no action taking, taken after these sessions, so our public session, it will end and now will recess.